Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you very much, Mike. Mark.
I'm just going to get a stapler.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate your time, thanks.
Do you want a stapler? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
You got to drive back to it tonight.
See ya.
See ya.
Okay, thanks very much.
Be careful, man.
Mr. Director, is there anything you wanted to say on this thing? Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the vacant Commissioner position. And thanks to some premature action at the last meeting, we opened the position up again and we have a number of applicants for the position. We have Victoria Robinson who's here and is it Genevieve Cox-Reed?
Genevieve.
Genevieve?
Jen's not here.
Jen's not here? And Donna Sue Ward-Holly. Hi, welcome. Okay. Has everybody seen the applications? Okay. How you want, Sean?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ask Donna Sue Ward-Holly to be the next Commissioner of Northwood Park Recreation.
Is there a second or for that motion? I can't do anything.
Well, I know, and I guess I feel like perhaps what I'd like to do may be part of that discussion.
We can't discuss if we have a motion.
Well...
You can second it.
Okay, well I...
Whatever you want.
Not second it, so I think if you're not going to, then we're done. So I would move that we question the candidates who are present, ask them questions to find out more information prior to meeting.
Should we interview the applicants?
Right, I mean, at least to a certain extent, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So what's the motion? First off, did my motion die?
Nobody has seconded it, so it never got off the ground to die. It crashed, so far.
I need you to say that.
Okay, it's crashed.
So the first motion died?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Now what we have to do is we've got a procedural approach here, which is to interview the applicants first. And if you'd move that we interview the applicants?
I do, I move, Mr. Chairman, that we interview the applicants present regarding the open commission position.
Oh, ready? Interview the applicants that are present for the commissioner for. Good. Okay, a second or?
Aye, second.
And Steve Simmons. Well, we've got something off the ground. Would you like to host the interviewing?
Do we have to vote on this?
No, we could vote.
Well, I think we have to, well, I think we have to vote on the motion.
Okay, vote in favor of having an interview?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. There are the files. And Wendy?
We do not have a copy of Vicki's here.
Oh, Vicki? Yeah. Well, we know Vicki, Vicki, Vicki.
And I...
Do you need a copy of it?
No, I think my questions are really simple and I know, I know Ms. Robinson, I know that you have already spoken to the board about this. However, given that it's a new day, I, you know, the question, I guess the first question I would have for each of you is why would you like to have this position? You know, why are you interested in this position?
Focus first.
Oh, do one first, do one person first, then one person first the next time.
Okay, great, thank you, sorry. I'm like, I didn't know whether to, I was like, is that Ms. Ward-Holly? Ms. Holly?
It's Donna Sue. And then, and yes, I have four names, but I go by Donna Sue Holly mostly, but anyway.
Okay.
So I swim. I think the town needs a pool, Northwoodby needs a pool, whatever, the district. And I noticed, I retired three years in the Navy, came home, and I've been reading in the paper, there's a lot of unrest, let's say, in the pool. And the pool isn't quite meeting my needs. I don't think it's meeting some of the people's needs. And I noticed that we have this name, Northwoodby Park and Recreation Commissioner, whatever it is. But when you put that into, look for it, all you see is a pool. So are we a pool? Or are we going to be something bigger? And I have a lot of talent and energy and skill to bring to the position. And I think it would be, I would be good for it. That's why I applied.
And so, since you're already standing up, since you're already feeling comfortable, I guess my second question would just be, what do you think that you can bring to the board?
Good question. In the Navy, I led a lot of people, but you have leadership. But I also being, a lot of times I was the number two in my intelligence positions. And I have a lot of good skill set of working with people, looking at problems, taking on projects. I tried to highlight where I work with budgets, where I work with facilities, maintenance, building new buildings, and I have a lot of that. So that's what I think I would bring to this. And I can zero in on a problem and look at the meat of it without getting mad or bothered by the fat of it. That's what I'd give it.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, and then I have two questions too. Absolutely, okay.
Yes, I believe that I have a unique knowledge of the district. I know the program. Also know how to cross-sell across the various programs. I can assist the director. I've been in the community for a number of years. I have one child left working at the pool. I'm no longer members of the swim team, but that is a consideration. That's awesome, right? I have a climbing background, I have an auditing background. I think that would be unique to the district and an asset to the board. I put a number volunteer hours in. Know many people on the board, know many of the people that are patrons of the pool. Longtime friends of the pool. But I think that I'm supporting the whole idea. For the board, help with the next study.
Anyone else have any other questions?
I actually, for the record, I talked to all three candidates and Jen who's not in here today. I actually sat down with Vicki because I mentioned last board meeting that I had concerns. And we sat down and had a good two hour conversation. We agreed to disagree at the end of which. So I thank them both for the time and the both of the courage to step up and apply for the board. And just not be a bystander, but to actually be part of it, so thank you.
I have a question for both of you. And that is simply this. Past is the past. This past two years has been, it's been brutal, really, for a lot of people. But the path forward, it can be very cloudy at times. I mean, you try to see that path forward. And what do you bring, I mean, to this moment that can help all of, when you look at the board, but also when you look at the public, we've got a levy on the horizon in two years upcoming. The levy fails, this pool closes. And how do we stem that tide of negativity throughout the community? And what do you have bring to the table, I think, to help us with this path forward to, you know, just to change that spirit that surrounds this place, but also out in the community, you know, just to get a positive image out there? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. I know it was, but...
I was saying something.
Yeah. If you don't follow, I'll break it down slower or smaller. I feel like I rambled.
No, I understood.
Okay.
I think I have a fresh perspective. And fresh energy. And because I'm not, I'm not personified cast. I don't know any of these people. I, you know, I'm the only person that I know that actually uses the pool. So, and I've done a lot of fundraising in the Navy, talking to people about budgets, getting my money for my projects, and I'm good at it.
Okay.
Well, I think I would be a man to raise one. Definitely, I believe that, like I said, long-term friends of the pool, they're just, they're looking for an opportunity to contribute.
Okay.
And right now, they're looking for that.
Thank you both very, very much. I'm actually doing it.
Okay, you're all good? Okay, how do you want to proceed? Do you want somebody to make a motion?
I'm gonna make my motion again and approve the ask Donna Sue Ward-Holly to be the next Commissioner. You want a vacant Commissioner's line?
A second or?
I'll second that.
Discussion, right? Here's the concern I have, and I'm being honest, is it's this process that we made a mistake and we owned it. But somewhat, I believe the process is somewhat tainted. And I just want to make sure that when we go forward that, because there's a part of me, I'm being honest with you guys, there's a part of me that I've considered letting this 90 days expire and letting the county commissioners deal on this. Because, because of the way we, the process went down last time. And there's been things said, and I just want to, for me anyway, in the spirit, I think, of fairness, speaking just for me, I am going to choose not to vote on this. I'm just letting you know, I'm going to abstain from voting. Because I, the bigger, the bigger part of me inside is leaning towards letting this 90 days expire and allowing the county commissioners to fill this position, and that's...
What do you feel, I mean, is it okay if I?
No, you're...
Okay, very, very fine. Well, okay, hold on, I just wanted to, do a second of the process. But what do you feel like it would resolve to do that?
Because I feel things have been said. And, you know, I think that some things were said that tend to make people believe that the process is biased. And I, I'm very concerned with that. And I'm very concerned with the image that we have here, that the way that we've done business, you know, has caused people to raise an eyebrow over this past couple of years. And I want to be completely fair. This is just me speaking. You know, I'm not asking you to agree with me.
I understand, but I want to understand why you're coming.
And I actually talked to Sheila Kreider about this today.
Okay.
And either way would be right. And, you know, she did, she did tell me. She said, "Well, I really appreciate your concern on this and for looking at it this way." And I'm not asking anyone else to necessarily agree with me on this. But this is how, how one-fourth of this board feels about that. And this is not a, you know, a negative on anyone. I'm just, I'm just looking at this process and for me, I want it to be cleaner than it was. And, anyway, I don't, hopefully that answered you.
It did, no, it did, it did. And I was just trying to understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
Okay. Ready for the question? Those in favor?
Aye. And I abstain.
Okay, so congratulations. Vicki, thank you for coming around the circle again. And we'll...
Can I say one thing?
You've been saying quite a few things, but you want to say another thing?
Well, I'll almost say something else then. I would encourage you, Vicki, to, you have talent and, you know, and you have, you have points that are unique and you bring a perspective that maybe some of us don't have. I would encourage you to stay involved and into, you know, just, you know, if this is what you want to do come November of 2015, there's an election. And just would encourage you, if that's what you want to do, to not be disappointed, be encouraged. Be encouraged. Thank you. You're welcome.
Donna Sue? It seems to me that you've got to start work fairly soon. I'd like to know when you want to do it.
I could start tonight.
Good, do we have? Last time I dared swear anybody in on the evening of a meeting, I got in big trouble because the position wasn't vacant yet. So I think it's safe to do it now. If you want to take a five-minute recess, we could do that. And then you can come and sit up here and get down to work. Do we have the form? A form for Commissioner? If not, let's find it in the office and fill it out.
We actually have to get that from the county. And the only one that can sign that is Sheila.
Sure.
Sheila. So she will have to get a copy of our minutes. And then Sheila signs it. So actually, as much as it would be nice to have, I didn't, you know, the new...
So we can't do it tonight?
No, we can't actually ask Donna to come up and talk to you. So I was gonna stop there. Sheila actually is the only one that can sign that form. And we cut that out from Commissioner Huffer before he left.
I guess I, I guess I already made more mistakes last time.
No, no. It's only been delayed for five days.
I'm already taking notes, I'll have questions.
So, yeah, Ms. Kreider actually, the county auditor is the only one that signed that form, as Commissioner Huffer told us, so we have to...
Okay, didn't tell me. Well, we've, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And feel free, feel free to interrupt in the proceedings as you see fit. As any of these guys up here would do. And Vicki, thank you again. Okay, Director's Performance Appraisal. Gino has been with us for six months and they've flown by. And for the Commissioners only, you have a sheet of paper, which is the evaluation form. And if you haven't got one here, I'll give you one. And put your name on it. Okay, that's right. Okay, have you all got one?
I think we all, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we all okay? If you'll put Gino's name on the top and your name in the corner and fill this out. Your comments can be longer than the two lines, but if you use this form and put them in a sealed envelope and leave them for me, I'll pick them up at the end of the week or so. Would that be good?
Leave them where, here?
Here at the office, but just in an envelope. I have a file out there, would it be okay if we use that file? The Commissioners' files?
Yeah.
So you can put them in the Commissioners' files at the desk. I'll pick them up, I'll collate them, and then we'll go into an executive session at the beginning of next month's regular meeting to talk about the collated results. And does that sound reasonable to you guys? Okay, and then Gino will talk to you, and then we'll be on our way.
Do you want it by, sorry, by when?
Well, anytime the next week or two.
Well, that's what I was just thinking about, I was like...
Yeah. It's for the next meeting, and I'd like to have a week in case it's a...
Can we do it by the end of the month?
By the end of the month is just, that's less than a week. No.
It's better than the end of a week.
Okay. Oh, well, no, I was thinking of seven-day weeks from whenever you start. Okay. I would like to have them by All Saints Day. That's November 1st. Okay, so feel free to fill them out, put them in an envelope, stick them in the file out there, I'll pick them up. Okay? And I can't believe you've been here for six months already. I'm glad you're here. Okay, now we have a huge item of business, which is the levy and the budget. And we can get through all the paperwork, it's sort of complicated, it would be great.
Right. You know, you all have packages here. First one is basically just approving the budget that you all approved last month. The budget is attached, I'm sorry. Then on the after the budget, there is the actual levy resolution that I have to submit to the county based on approving the budget.
Now, Wendy, you had a question about the principles behind the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Would you please ask that question before we do anything?
Well, in our, oh, there are the resumes. Sorry. What we had, okay, so at the last meeting, we approved, or at the special meeting, excuse me, we approved the budget.
Yes.
But there were principles for the budget, and although it's scratched out, it actually says June 2014. But there are these 10 principles, and we opted to, in that special meeting, approve the numbers.
Yes.
As, at least for me, as I had never seen these before, that meeting, I wanted to take some time to review them.
Sure, sure, those principles came from a workshop. We did two budget workshops in June, I guess it was, if that's what the date is on.
Right, absolutely.
And that came from, that was to give people backgrounds, so they knew where the principles were behind, what the numbers came to be.
Absolutely. And, and so I think that we had an outstanding item to discuss and/or approve them. And I know that I certainly have some questions about them. And if I, if I should have or should talk to you directly about them, I'm not, since I'm not sure exactly who was kind of in charge of deriving them, I really wasn't sure whether to address that with you personally or whether to bring it here. So I just wanted to be sure that we didn't miss the items, since they're not approved.
Okay, what, like, are they substantial? Would they change the budget or would the budget still stand? Because otherwise, what happened was we had a workshop with all the Commissioners and people that were interested in the budget.
Correct.
And members of the staff that were interested.
Yep, yep.
And we fussed for a long time, and that was sort of the consensus that we came to. And so if it's, if they changed the numbers, then we should talk about them, if they're principles, so we can redraft them and do a different set of principles or modify the principles. I don't think we have to do that to do the numbers.
Okay, I don't think they necessarily changed the numbers, but I would definitely say, as written, I wouldn't be comfortable approving them. So perhaps if it makes more sense for me to... Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I would appreciate the opportunity to do that, just so that I understand it, whether it's rewording things, you know. I don't know if these actually even need to be passed, or if it's just was a, this is what we did use and therefore, you know, good for us.
This is how we got here.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if that's, if that's all it is, then maybe it doesn't need to be approved. It's just if we are saying, as we make adjustments, we expect to use this doctrine, then I think it probably bears more discussion. Does that make sense?
Could I, could I humbly suggest that you work with the Director? And if it looks like something where we really should get in and discuss the philosophy around it, this is a truly important document for next year. It's going to be a sort of the umbrella under which everybody works. Then the Commission can get involved or we can have another workshop.
That would be great.
But you guys decide it, okay? And then we'll approve it.
Right, and that's why, you know, tonight, just getting them to sit there, all that information, I personally think we could push it to the next meeting. We still have time to get it to the county by February 30th, and everybody can review it.
Well, I think if we approve these tonight, we're right on the deadline. You're running really late, because they're going to have their numbers mid-November. And if we have our budget in there, then we're in the, in the first lineup with that thing, but...
And I don't, I don't think there's, so, at least from my perspective, I don't think there's anything in here that I would say, I think, makes any, has any, has any numerical impact on, on voting on the budget. It's philosophy as we carry forward and as we review the budget in 2015, right? Exactly.
But then give them more instead.
Exactly, yes, yes, okay.
Okay, well, we've approved these numbers.
So where do we add, is that the question?
The budget was approved, and the question is the first page. And this is a Resolution 1404 from the Northwoodby Park and Rec District.
So I make a motion that we approve Resolution 1404, I'm sorry.
Is there a second or?
And these are all the same chart, is it?
These are the same things that you've got.
Okay.
And we're doing it through to ordinance resolution, we're not doing it beyond here. We've got to look at this separately, okay? So we're just doing the numbers that we approved the last time, to keep it in little pieces. That's right, that's it? Okay.
Okay, in that event, yeah. Oh, second.
Okay. Comments, questions?
You know, I understood what you said last night, but I just, I can't get over the fact that some of these numbers that are so high, that we know they're high going into it, I guess I don't quite under, I still, I just really don't understand why we would do it that way. And, you know, the one that John chatted at me is, well, Enwak, $83,000 in revenue. There's no, and there's no way you're gonna have $83,000 in revenue from Enwak this year. And I know what you said while you...
It's next year.
This is next year's budget.
This is next year, that's not this year.
Next year, it's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen this year, but it may happen next year.
And I think the way, so Steve, I think the way that I looked at it is, is that after, is that after the first quarter, that we would look at where we are, based on, you know, basically do first-quarter projections to say, where do we need to make adjustments right now?
And that's what the workshop wants to do too, to use it as a management tool.
You know, the one thing I wish we would have done, you know, you remember when Huffer was here, the one thing he recommended was bringing an accountant in and actually looking at some of our numbers with us. We all thought that sounded like a really good idea, but then we never did it, you know? And I think that next year, we need to start looking at that. I guess Craig used to do that, but so it's not, is that true, Alan?
Nope.
Really, and I heard, I heard he did. I heard he brought an accountant in before.
He had Chris Cross here.
Yeah, but I think I heard that an accountant actually came and spent time with Chris, so...
Oh, yeah, time.
Yeah. So, so he did it then?
No, he didn't do it to do this.
If the accountant came and talked to Chris, what was he here for?
Because they had a real problem trying to change from an item accounting to a program accounting. And we had different, we tried to reshape the pages. And he brought an accountant in to try to see how to do it in QuickBooks.
Well, I'm recommending right now, in the future, that we at least consider that and think about it. And we'll talk about it as a different time. I think you'll really behoove a good PRD in this next year to look to bring an accountant in and helping us go over some of this. I really do.
Any more comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this proved unanimously and all. We have to sign this one and... Yes, I'm just going to do one at a time. Because everybody hasn't seen these things, and there's so many of them. Okay, then there's ordinance Resolution 1405. Board of Commissioners, Northwoodby Park and Rec District has met and considered its budget for 2015. Whereas the district's actual levy from the previous year was 565,000, whereas the population of this district is more than 10,000, be it resolved by the governing body of the taxing district that an increase in the regular property tax levy is hereby authorized for the levy to be collected into the 2015 year. The dollar amount of the increase of the actual levy is $6,656, which is a percentage increase of 1%. That's the regular 1 percentage thing that we apply for each year. And so what we have to do is approve this and send it to the county. And then beside it, behind it, if you look at it, is the thing that looks, is reminiscent of a tax return, which tells the thousand ways that they calculate a levy and then decide what an independent governing agency is entitled to. And so we've done that game. We've got the numbers, and then we put the number for our budget in there, as I was told to do when I went to county. And then you went down to county and you confirmed it. So both of us heard the same message, which means it's probably close to true. Okay? And that's where we are. We don't have to sign this thing though, do we? Just, just the ordinance.
Just the ordinance.
Okay. Would somebody be willing to move the ordinance?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance Resolution Number 1405.
Thank you. They, they need it to, to process the levy for us.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay. Do you want to sign yours, Sean, and then just pass it down? You've got a copy of it.
I, can you do a sign right here in the front?
Yep. And we'll just... And the one dangling thing here is we've got to go over those principles. And that's Wendy, you're going to chat to Gino to see where you're both comfortable.
Yep.
And you're going to both decide whether... And you're going to both decide whether you want to get us all involved or just bring another set of principles to. They'll probably be better for the review. Thank you. Well, that means we get pay next year for the pool. Is there anything else on the budget? It seemed to me that somebody had something.
No, no. It was just the head coach update. That was the last thing on there.
Well, okay, well, give us the head coach update. That would be...
Yeah, we had a great interview on our TalkCannons last Saturday. We're having another interview on Monday. This is the first time he was able to make a redo of Skype at 5:30 Monday night, in Skype with Coach Taylor. And we'll go from there.
Super. So when do you think you'll be able to tell us something? End of the month?
I hope, yeah. I hope by next, a week from Friday.
All Saints Day.
That's right.
Okay.
Now, can I just clarify that? So the process then, as it is, you would identify the person effectively you want to hire, and our role in that is approving the contract. Is that accurate?
Yes, I put a committee together.
Right, I know, the search committee, yeah, right. I understand. But I'm saying, our role, our actual only role in that is a budget approval, or excuse me, contract approval. Is that accurate? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we just approved the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've done employee of the month.
Yes.
And, okay, Wendy, reemail investigation.
At this moment, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion.
Take a good chair. Okay, Wendy, you're, I have no idea quite what it is, so...
Okay, well, and I...
I haven't checked my email.
Okay.
Because I logged myself out, and when Aaron sent me my password reset, I was at work. And according to the Hatch Act, I cannot check an email. I cannot do board business without a computer. So I don't, I have no clue which one.
Okay, well, I think, I think, but I think additionally, and I'm just trying to be kind of sensitive here, that if you have to leave in five minutes and Steve has to, you know, Steve felt the need to leave the room, I'm not sure that we can actually continue with this discussion, can we?
What was the email?
The email was in regard to, and if I can make a reference to it, to, in related to the comments that Sherry made during public comment. And so it was in relation to situations with Ally Hochmeyer. And the reason why I felt it was important to bring up was because effectively there are allegations of discrimination as it relates to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And I believe that's the right terminology. But, and I think it's, to me, it's the, that's a serious enough accusation that their investigation request was out there, and I think we need to, I think there needs to be an investigation. And so part of what I wanted to discuss was, what does that process look like? And I'm not trying to usurp anything that you're doing. I just think it's serious enough that everyone needs to be involved and that we need to, or not involved, but everyone needs to be aware. But everyone needs to be aware, and that we need to agree that, I mean, that it's serious enough that there needs to be some action taken in terms of investigation. So I don't know if now is the time to continue the conversation, if we need to...
Well, actually, the chair, if I may.
Yes, I haven't seen the email either.
Okay, the chair can appoint somebody as a subcommittee, or even by Robert's rules, appoint one of us to look into something, along with the director. I had talked to the parties involved, and there's, you know, unfortunately with ADA, with everything, discrimination in ADA, there's, you have to be very clear. The Americans with Disabilities Act is very clear on employment, all right? And that's how it relates. And then physical capabilities, did we, did the district discriminate based on any disability? Any usage of the pool, anything else? And so that is one issue that we'd have to look into. The other issue with ADA is specific with employment. And so we have to look at that issue also, make sure that we do not violate ADA when it comes to employment. And so one of the things that, when it was brought to my attention, I asked, I said, well, you know what? I know people involved. Helen knows people involved. So I threw you under the proverbial bus. And actually suggested that since you don't know, you know...
We've got Donna Sue now.
No, Donna Sue, no. I couldn't, I couldn't have done that.
Well, we can't totally sworn in, I don't think. I don't know if I'll get in trouble again.
That didn't happen yet. So my suggestion was that, hey, you know, we do need to look at this. And I think one of us, you know, somebody who's fair and impartial, and I feel, maybe personally, I'd be fair and partial, so... I'm glad that you were able to say it.
This, Mr. Director, have you, any thoughts? It falls under the bylaws, you're responsible for personnel or employee.
Right. I agree. Be straight up based on that email.
I haven't seen the email.
But I would think the new commissioner, that I think we should do a co-investigation.
So for Wendy?
Not Wendy.
We can't, well, I think, I think the thing is, is I think we can't, tonight, we couldn't make that decision.
Right, I know, I know. Once...
But I think we can't, so here's why this is, here's why I feel this is important, is we've talked a lot about the public perception of the district. And as much as this might not be wide and far, I think, I think it's something that we have to understand as quickly as possible. And I think we have to address any gaps, I'm just going to use that word generally, but as quickly as possible. And so I don't, and so it's no disservice to anybody else. It's more in the interest of the district doing what is right and good. And putting and settling this, if you will, you know, I would love to say once and for all, but settling any concern that anyone might have. So while I think ideally, I think that would, I think she would, I think the new commissioner would be a great choice, I think that it would require us to either call a special meeting, or it would require us to wait a month. And I don't feel like we have, I think it is, time isn't the essence here.
It sounds like you're volunteering.
Absolutely. I absolutely will.
So I'll appoint a special committee of the director and Wendy to report back their findings. And if they need it, we'll have a special meeting.
I would say at this point, also for the record, that any findings towards any employee needs to be careful with. We need to be careful with what we talk about in an open public being at twice.
Yeah, I have the, it would be an executive session if we're working on an individual or their performance.
Unless it's the director.
Or overall policy. The director as well? Okay, is that acceptable? Everybody comfortable with that? Steve, will that be a start?
I can't comment. My wife can comment for my family.
Okay.
Since you asked me, I'm ready to answer.
So we have a special committee then, or subcommittee, which is Wendy and Gino. And you're going to get together to try and figure out budget principles, so you can choose the time and have a long day.
You betcha. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Public comments. Vicki? Yes?
I need to address concerns that Commissioner Merrill, when I was originally asking to go to the public, one, has done the newspapers, two, has done a public meeting, and then three, I did meet with Commissioner Merrill with a member of the public. And as a result, I would like to make sure that those concerns were addressed in how I answer them, okay? Because I was under the impression when he bore, some of the lawsuits, gave me a letter from the board that, well, I was absolved of any wrongdoing.
Yeah, and I put that into a letter to re-edit.
I know you did. But Commissioner Merrill said that the letter meant nothing, basically.
Meant something to me.
Well, I would like to believe that it did mean something, but as I was told as a commissioner, as an individual commissioner, that that letter meant nothing. And I have...
Those were not exact words, please.
Well, that's when I came away with it.
Okay, so you came away with this being...
Excuse me. I would like to finish. Oh, sure. That the letter meant nothing, and that he needed to answer to the public in regards to my answer and his ability to put me in as a commissioner, okay? And we talked about the fraud audit. And the problem with the fraud audit is team unified audit, and it is not the team's financial system. It was quoted that way in the newspaper at least twice. It was never the team's financial system. It was an invoicing tool.
River Powers, got that in?
I understand. But River Powers and the auditor both labeled it as simply the invoicing tool. That's why there's all the question about the audit itself. The information that is there, there was no, in some cases, no answer. There were questions, but there was no answer. And that's because it was not the financial tool. Or the financial system, I'm sorry. It was a tool to, that system, and that system was done on this spreadsheet, okay? I explained this to the auditor, that I was going to Commissioner Merrill. He said basically that I was very evasive when it came to responding to the state auditor. And that's not true. I was maybe evasive when I was speaking with the attorney, but never with the state auditor. That is the only entity that I know that had a transcript. State auditor never had one, okay? Now, I don't know if he's saying that the board made a mistake in providing that letter in some of the lawsuit. And that is my concern, and I do believe that's the perception that was given, both in the newspaper, here in public meeting, and particularly when we met together. I do believe that is the perception, is that the board made a mistake, and that I should be held accountable for something. What I find interesting is that audit never covered invoicing at all. It never covered the deposits. It never covered the reconciliations that I did, or followed the process so that they could come in audit. All of that information was in my notebook, checkbook. That information was there. There was a question regarding the Aquathon funds, and I couldn't find anything in the drawer. The drawer was filled with documentation supporting the spreadsheet that was on the computer and in your server. I have a copy of it. I have a copy of the information in the, and my notebook. All of those deposits were confirmed. I mean, they're in that notebook. We started out with confirming my deposit. None of that information was whatsoever in the, in the fraud audit at all. Nothing. None of that is in there. And I mentioned that. So I don't know where it is that I became untrustworthy, but that's what his concern is, is that I remain untrustworthy. And I don't believe that's necessarily my untrustworthy, but I do believe the public has a problem with fraud. I do believe that the public has a problem with giving input confidence. And that's what I thought that I could help mend. I'm not trying to undo anything, but I do believe you need to understand what happened here, so that you can make things better going forward. And that's what I was wanting to be a part of, was that part of putting things in place and going forward. So what has been brought into your bookbooks is insufficient, and it is not accurate. So you're trying to function with something that you believe is a tool, I mean, is part of the N-WAC system, and all of this is a tool. And we had put into place things that would allow us to reconcile our transactions to what was deposited. There were a number of reconciliations that were put in. And as a matter of fact, Justice Jensen was quite aware of it, and acknowledged, wanted me to acknowledge to the board me, because I did put the deposits together. We were using it, and that information is in the N-WAC notebook. None of that is in the fraud audit. So there's a cloud that continues to remain over me, which I think is totally unfair. And I do believe it's part of why Commissioner Merrill was unable to support my nomination to the board. And that's fine. I have the, he says that he's worried that I'm going to undo something, that I'm going to come in and create damage, like I said. You have to understand where we came from, so that you can go forward. And I did want to be a part of that process. I had no intention to destroy anything. I have been publicly humiliated over and over, and I would not do that if my efforts to help were not sincere.
Sean is a great ally of the board and the district, and speaks very clearly from where he is, which is nice. I only know little bits about what you were saying, but I can promise you that you have a record, a letter that's signed by everybody. It's on the board.
Well, I thought it was supposed to mean something, but he meant quite clear. It means nothing.
Well, maybe, that's unusual for Sean, but I think that he has concerns that may not have been the same as the letter, and I'll let you speak for yourself. I signed it, saying, fine. And so that's one vote won, I guess, at the worst.
I understand, but like I said, it's difficult to be put in that position where I have to go back down to defend myself when I definitely had to solve that issue. And if there was something that I should have answered, or I didn't answer, I think there was a time that that could have been resolved, but we're past that. I wanted to have an opportunity to put things back into place, because like I said, your votes are not accurate because you didn't bring in the financial system. You should be carrying a counter sealer. You have to carry the counter sealer. And like I said, nobody ever looked at the invoicing. They never audited the invoicing at all. And the forty thousand dollars transactions that were in question would have all been resolved, all answered, had they audited the process. And they didn't.
I heard.
Pardon me?
I said, I've heard you. Well, I think the board is...
Well, I understand, but it's like I said, I definitely were at point where we could work for a goal.
Yeah.
But here that we can't go forward because there are other concerns, that's disappointing. And like I said, that doesn't mean anything.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, next general meeting is November twentieth, twenty fourteen, seven PM. We have final comments from the commissioners, and I would like to say, Vicki, that I appreciate Sean's honesty and his directness and his knowledge of this place. And we would have got around a lot of problems if we'd been here for the meeting, or we made some of the messes. So that he's got a really good side for the commission. I hear what you're saying, and I've never looked into those books, so I can't...
I understand, but I'm just saying, because those concerns were expressed in the manner in which they were. There were answers. They just, and I understand, like I said, that, I can't go back and undo that.
No, that's all right. I heard you. I repeat him there too. Any other comments? Sean, do you want to say?
Um, video, thanks for your comments. You know, thanks for taking the time to talk. I am not going to waste the time or energy to try and change the reception. I'm sorry if you feel that. I did sign the comments. No, excuse me. I apologize for interrupting you. Please don't finish. Thank you. I truly appreciate you putting in for the board. I appreciate you taking the courage to step up. I do take, took away something from my conversation, too, Alice. I have not shared that conversation with anybody, and I refuse to share that conversation with anybody. That's between you and me. All right? No? I know you're shaking your head, no, but that truly wasn't...
There was a third party.
There was a third party there texting me after the lawsuit, but definitely felt that was more with your actions and things. So I'm not going to worry about changing the reception. Thank you for sharing with us. And thanks for trying to come and be part of this.
And one more comment.
No, no, stop. This is Mr. Chairman. This is our comments, not hers.
But you attacked her.
Right. My lawsuit was not protected. It was protected.
Okay, let's stop now, and everybody can talk on later. Next round regularly session is November, regular session is November twentieth.
I have a final comment.
Oh, did you have a final?
Yes, I have a final comment. There are going to be things over this next couple of months possibly that, and I'm asking the board to give me that leeway to use judgment to recuse myself from other things. Because I, honest to goodness, I want to do the ethical thing. And if it gets to that point where a big decision is made, I don't mind if any of you come to me. and want to share your concerns and I will listen to your concerns. But make no mistake about it, my hope for NWPRT, for the John Vander Ziegman pool and for every single program, including NWA. NWA has meant so much to my family over time. I want the very best for it. And please make no mistake about that, anyone. And I think that many of us over this past two years that have experienced things feel that same way and that's the one thing that I think that unifies us in a, in a crazy sort of way that even though sometimes we're 180 hours, we've seen the, we've seen what NWA's done for young people. You know, whether it's swimmers who go into college like the Who's or, you know, or kids who are just swimming, right? If it's just a moment in time, you know, I would ask you for that to stay involved. You know, the relationships that we all have developed over those years, they kind of transcend our differences, really. You know, I heard this song yesterday, "What's Love Without Your Brother," right? Silly little song I heard, I really didn't even think about that. But I miss the times when we were all together. The tents tied together in Yakima, those were some good times, man. And I want those same good times for other families that are coming up and along, right? We're going to be gone, fade into the fabric. Each and every one of us will be gone. You know, but in five years, 10 years, if we work together for something good, there'll be more tents tied together in Yakima. Those were some great times, man. And I would just encourage us all, somehow to put differences aside. And that's going to be hard, because it's hard for me right now. You know, it really is, and that's why we made that choice for Ally to go to NACORDIS. It wasn't because we want to hate, it's because we're looking for the, we want our kid to smile, but at the same time, we don't want to be that person who's here dragging things down. So I implore you, encourage you, all of you, somehow reach out to your brother and just be encouraged and that's all I really have to say. Thanks for letting me share that.
Thank you.
Fill us on a poll for a moment.
Sounded pretty good, you had the down-to-earth, things going as well. Okay, November 20th, 7:00 PM here, unless there's a special meeting in between with the projects that are ongoing, okay? So you can set that one down. Thank you all for coming.
Would I make a motion to adjourn?
I second that.
I guess it passed.
I, now it passed.
That was...
The two of us did it.
Yeah, you did it, two, nothing. Okay, you, did you move that battery? I do have to write that down. Steve, did you move for your adjournment?
I did.
And Wendy, and Wendy did the second? Okay, you got it. It's really nice to meet you.
Who do I have to go see at the county and will they call me?
Gino, 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 can you coordinate it and I'll talk down to the county and try and make sure we get the forms and all the back end stuff. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, thank you.
So what time do you swim?
I've been coming, trying to come at noon because I don't like it in the crowd. And so I swim with the seniors.
With the masters?
Masters, sorry.
Oh, goodie, so you're...
Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Good, good.
These were yours.
Thank you.
Hi, nice to meet you. Hi, nice to meet you. Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we don't need that, we need that, we need that. Get the breaker, but don't spin your back. Well done, chief, you've got it all. Okay, that's the signed page with your, unless the county does a good follow-ups, you've got it all there. And everybody else. You took, this is a rough month. I don't, Ross here was, just from the way I was sleeping, but you can only blow it so long. And I, I find it very, very hard to do all the things, you know, and it's always, it's like a fish.
But in here, these meetings, he talks like he's crazy and...
He should have done a master.
He should have.
Maybe kept focused on it. Is there anything else you need to like take apart, if I got it all?
No, you got it all there, and I'll get with Wendy.
Tomorrow, I may, look, when you do it, just usually, at least it's there, it's your responsibility. She's doing the political side and just to try and see, make sure that we can avoid some of the guns.
Tomorrow in the morning, if this still keeps up, I may go to medical, but...
Please do.
See how the night got me. Yeah, no, you're good.
I was trying not to breathe deep because that seems to trigger it.
Ah, we'll be in the news again, I see.
Oh, hey, hey. Some people want some of these.
I know.